Okay, I think we're going to call it an order the February 24th regular meeting of the Tipp City Schools Board of Education. And Mrs. Heather Lee has some special guests to invite to introduce tonight for Mrs. Kerr's class. And then we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunaway, representing Mrs. Kerr's class in LT Ball's 4th grade. Pod are Mackenzie Rader, Mallory Maxwell, Taylor Demange, and Sarah Teeman. Ladies, would you approach the flag and everybody please stand?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Here.
Oh.
Here.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Present.
Mr. Patrick.
Here.
Mr. Cor.
We're here.
I'm present and uniformed as you can.
Okay, we will start with the superintendent and assistant superintendent report. I'll turn that over to Dr. Com.
All right, thank you. First one, let's start off with information about our February 14th, our professional development day. It was a great day in the district and I know Mr. Beerhoff has provided handout to our board members that's just looking at the titles and the description of the sessions that were provided that day. There were 23 breakout sessions provided by our own staff in large and they did a fantastic job. We had a great day. It started out with the health and wellness piece. Our health and wellness committee did a great job as well, providing some exercise, getting us all going. That was in the gymnasium and we had a healthy breakfast together and then a health fair, a health and career fair that was, a benefit fair that was available to our staff. And then that was followed by our rotations with all of our breakout sessions. In the afternoon, there was time provided for building and team meetings and they put that to good use of time. And I do want to take a moment to definitely highlight that planning committee. And that happened to be Heather Yunker, that's our professional development committee, our district committee. Heather Yunker, Jody Duncan, Kristen Marsh, Sharon Pfister, Alexa Gentry, Amy Noel, Anne Chewie, Molly Sanders, and our assistant superintendent, leaning the helm, Steve Beerhoff. So, an excellent job and a special thank you to our health and wellness committee as well. Great job that day. And just to top it off, we've been working on what we call safety goal buckets. It's part of the OWLS training and part of the resources for classrooms. And so 231 of those were created and those were provided. And our staff was very great to stop by and pick those up. We had a discussion center for that and so we have those in classrooms now. That's an additional safety resource. So, a great day and one of those that you feel very fulfilled about at the end of that. Mr. Beerhoff, anything you want to add to that because I know you were highly involved?
Well, I would just echo your words on thanking the committee. Without their help and input, we wouldn't have been able to pull that off. It was a great opportunity for staff to learn from other staff members. And it was kind of a throwback to how we used to do some professional development in the district years ago. And I think the feedback that we're getting from staff, we sent out a survey and have had almost 100 people respond to that survey, which is pretty good.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
I think that's actually a big deal.
There's overwhelming support for continuing this type of format and learning from each other and allowing choice in our professional learning.
All right. Next item is the shuttle bus and it's just a follow-up from a prior discussion. And I just wanted to highlight that after having further discussion with our transportation supervisor as well as the principals, we do have staff students that do ride the shuttle in some cases. And that is a shuttle that is already scheduled for a route. And that's going between Broadway and elementary, LT Ball and TCEP and as well as Nevin Coffee. So that happens on a daily basis. And that we also, those students that walk to LT Ball that are in the area, that there is a shuttle that provides them transportation over to Broadway each day. And that is supervised for them as they board the bus each day. So, just to follow up on that and want to make sure that I was more clear of what the information after I had talked further with the transportation supervisor. And then the other piece that I had was about Power School update and that connects to the GPA. So, we had a migration from Dazzle to Power School, which was a big job. And that's been a couple of years ago actually, but it's ongoing because there's different layers in the system. So, the Power School does have the ability to show the GPA on for the calculation for the running term. And I know Mrs. Dunaway has been an advocate for hearing from the community and seeing the benefit of how that would serve our students and our parents, particularly as they're applying for scholarships and/or as they're monitoring their own progress. And we have some, a number of students that really are looking at their own progress and that's a piece that they like to be informed about. So, administration value that as well, to have that available. Mr. Zink has, he had his coffees. He was hearing from some of our parents about that that would be a piece that they would, you know, appreciate having. So, I'm happy to say that the GPA for the current semester is available for students and their parents in their portal to be able to view that. And Mr. Sagona is diligently working on an additional development of pages that would allow for the cumulative GPA. And that should be available in about two weeks. So, he's been working for a while and it should be about two more weeks and that should be available and be able to be posted. So, I want to thank everyone for their interest in that, for conveying when that is something that we're hearing about, that parents are interested in and needing. And in the end, that we work together and get that done. Thank you all. And we're up to curriculum.
Okay, and I'm going to move towards the board here to get ready for graduation requirements as well. Hopefully you can bear with me here, my voice is kind of going a little bit tight in the cold. It seems like you can't avoid the germs at our house right now with three little ones at home. With curriculum, we are working towards getting curriculum maps finished. The snow days are throwing us off just a touch. We're hoping to have those in your hands as soon as possible to get those approved. Continuing to get quotes on materials. It seems like we're moving more towards interactive and away from traditional textbook. So, looking more at history alive and government alive, even at the high school level. So, we'll see where that takes us here in the next couple of weeks as far as quotes and where the staff is on that. But the main thing I wanted to talk to you about tonight was graduation requirements because it is, it seems like it's an ever-moving target. And right now, we have three different sets of graduation requirements for students at the high school. There's a set for the class of 2020, there's a set for 21, 22, and then there's a set for 23 and beyond. And as I said, it seems like it's an ever-moving target for our students. And there is an agenda item on tonight that would have an impact on how students could meet some of those graduation requirements. So, I thought it would be good for you to have some of that background leading up to that. So, let's start with the basics and what we have control over and not necessarily the state. And that is the number of required credits that we have for our students. So, we require 21. And, you know, we talk a lot about TIP standards. This is one of those that goes a little bit above and beyond everybody else. Most school districts require 20, we're requiring 21. So, you need 21 credits to earn that diploma and then there are three options for graduation. And those options get more and more complicated the younger student that you are at the high school. So, this is just a breakdown of those 21 credits. I won't bore you by reading through that. I think most of you are very familiar with that at this point. So, this all goes back to state law that the Ohio Legislature started tinkering with back in 2016 and has continued to, as I said, move that target over the last few years. The basics are this, for the class of 2020, they need to earn at least 18 points on the Ohio State test. There are seven Ohio State tests at the high school level. There's ELA 1, ELA 2, there's Algebra 1, Geometry, American History, Government, and Biology. So, students have to take all seven of those courses and they earn a combination of those 18 points. Now, there's some stipulations within those 18 points that they have to meet as well. We'll talk about those in a moment. Another pathway to graduation is to earn an industry-approved 12-point credential. And we'll talk about those or a remediation-free ACT score. What I will tell you is that if a student is earning a remediation-free ACT score, they've already hit the 18 points on their, on the credits. When you look at these breakdowns of what students would need to earn on the ACT or the SAT, they're right there for those 18 points as well.
Mr. Beerhoff, so if they get that third option, the first option on the testing is not necessary?
No, would not. Any of those three options would be.
It's a luau.
Yes, they still have to take the test.
Oh, they do, the state test, okay.
So, let's talk about those 18 points. Let's talk about those state tests. You have to earn a minimum of four points on the English test. You have to earn a minimum of four points on the math test. A combined minimum of six points for science and social studies. And then four points coming from the other content areas, whatever that may be. Maybe you earn six points in English or seven points in science and social studies. Some sort of combination of that to get you to the 18. But these are the bare minimums. And remember, this is just the class of 2020. It changes beyond that. The industry credential, which is something that you're going to be approving tonight or talking about approving tonight with Lean Six Sigma. That's an opportunity for students to earn an industry credential in our building. We have one other way that we're doing that and that is through our home building class. They would earn a carpentry credential. So, basically what the state is saying, they want our students to earn a 12-point credential who aren't meeting those state testing requirements and leave high school with the skill and continue to build upon that skill. It could also be a pre-apprenticeship program. And these are just the different career fields that there are industry credentials available. Lean Six Sigma is across all of these industries. Obviously, the ones for home building would be confined to that construction industry. In combination with that 12-point credential, they have to pass what's called the ACT Work Keys. And the Work Keys is more focused on applied skills in the workforce. So, the setup of the test is much different than it would be the state test. It's more of reading instructions from a manual and being able to answer questions based on that manual for the reading portion. Taking applied math, the perimeter of a room, the area of a driveway that's going to be poured, things of that nature to measure work skills, not math skills as we would look at in the classroom. So, this is an ever-moving target as well. For the past two years, there was a score of 19, excuse me, 13 on the Work Keys. It's now up to 14 and that will continue with these classes that follow. You have to earn at least three points on each test. So, if you go back, there was three parts in the test. You have to earn at least three on each part. It started out that it was just nine points. You just had to earn a three. And they've just been increasing it from year to year. So, that remediation-free ACT or SAT score, that kind of speaks for itself. It should be noted here that this is not something that's set by the legislatures. If not something that's set by us, it's set by the Ohio Universities and Colleges as far as what those remediation-free scores will be. So, if a student in class of 2020 does not meet one of those three pathways, what do things look like for them? Well, you can break it down into what, maybe almost 10 different options for them? I won't bore you by reading through all these, but some of the things that our students have done in the past to meet some of these alternative pathways would be a capstone project, community service hours, work hours. Maybe they're able to get their GPA up to that 2.5 cumulative that is needed. So, there's some different things in here, but what I will say is that, you know, for one of those options to be a score of three or higher on an AP exam, that's not going to happen for an at-risk student. And it's just not a practical solution for the problems that we're seeing. So, I think that's something that you can take away from this when you're talking to state legislators is that some of these things are just not practical. So, 21 and 22, you can meet the class of 2020 requirements or you can meet the new ones. So, you have options. I wouldn't say that they're necessarily great options, but they're options. So, let's look at 23 and beyond. First, you have to show competency on just two state tests. That's great. We love that. Algebra 1, ELA 2, those are the only two state tests that students would have to show a competency score on. And I say competency because it's moving away from that term proficiency or proficient. Rumor is, and it's supposed to come out this week officially, is that the cut scores for that competency level is going to be 684. Now, to put that in perspective, 700 is a proficient score. So, that would, if they move it to 684, that is going to cast a pretty large net to get students who normally wouldn't be at those 18 points and gets them those two passing scores that they need or competency scores. That doesn't mean the other tests are going away. There's only one test that's going away right now and possibly a second. The one that's going away is ELA 1. And then geometry is the other one that could potentially go by the wayside, taking us down to five state tests. There's still some discussions going on with that geometry test. Now, it says here, testing is not your strength? Well, you've got three different options. You can earn an industry credential and also, Ohio means job readiness seal, pass the Work Keys. Or you could enlist in the military. That would be considered another option for graduation. The third option would be to complete college coursework. So, you complete one CCP course, but it's got to be in math or English. Again, I would contend that students who are completing CCP coursework in math or English and passing that aren't going to have any problem showing competency on an Ohio State test. We might have a couple outliers there, but for the most part, that's really not a practical solution for some of our students who are at risk graduating.
But what happens if they pass that, that English or math CCP, but they don't on the state test?
Then they're good.
They're good.
They're good to go, yep. So.
That's a lot to understand.
That's just the first step. Notice the "and." And you have to show readiness. So, in their, catch my sarcasm here, their infinite wisdom, they've created a number of seals for students to earn. Now, we have no interest in making our diploma look like a passport. So, we're not going to be putting a bunch of different seals on the diplomas. These would be things that would go on students' transcripts. And we're already working with Power School to develop that, just like most school districts across the state. Some of these seals, the majority of these seals are determined by the state. There are a couple that we are able to determine that are called local seals. And those are the community service seal, student engagement seal, and the fine arts seal. Now, last Friday, we met at the high school and talked a little bit about what those could look like. We're trying to match it up with other school districts in the area because sometimes you have kids who move and you want there to be some consistency between those students that move from school district to school district. The others, some of them tie into work skills, some of them tie into testing. Some of those tests that didn't go away. So, there's a citizenship seal. So, if you score proficient on a government or a US history test, then you would earn that citizenship seal. The long and the short of it is you have to earn two and that's all we're concerned about. Earn two and you're ready for graduation. So, it's, you read all this up here and this, and then according to the state of Ohio, you can graduate. I'm going to add a little of my own editorial comments here, but I feel like this is something that the board could talk with state legislators about and put pressure on them to give the control back to the local school districts and let local school districts determine how we graduate our students.
Do we have to recognize seals from other schools that, under the local control?
We could choose not to. I wouldn't say that that would necessarily be in our best interest though. But yeah, that was something.
I should know how that, how that works, if we had, if we had to honor them or if we choose to honor them?
It does not, I don't think, I'd have to go back and check ORC. I don't think we have to honor those, but our conversation, I was at a work session with other curriculum directors in the Montgomery County area about a week and a half ago. And our conversation was, we need to make sure that we're recognizing each other's because you're going to have students that are going to be moving in. Typically, those are students that are going to be at risk.
And how are we supporting our guidance counselors at the high school? Because there's so many moving parts, there's so many moving targets. And then parents have all these questions because you read stuff in social media, you know, whether you're watching the news, you see something at a board meeting and your ears perk up.
Correct.
And then our guidance counselors are getting bombarded with all these phone calls.
Correct.
And it might be premature because they haven't even really been, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I know exactly what you're saying.
They want them to be prepared.
Actually, Mrs. Robbins and I had a conversation before the meeting tonight. I said, you know, I've got a kind of a template laid out here. Let's put some sort of handout together that can go on our website, that can go into parents' hands, go into students' hands so that this is pretty clean and clear-cut for them as much as we can possibly make it. Beyond that, and this is just going to be good practice for the current freshmen as well, with the students of 2024, that graduating class, all students have to have what's called a success plan. And that's something that would go with them throughout their four years. It would track some of these seals that they're working towards. It would track their testing and goes beyond that, even their career interests and things of that nature. So, we're in communication with Power School already about creating something like that in our student information system so that it's all in a one-stop shop. And when a student goes to transfer, we're just sending that record along with them and then we're taking a success plan of an incoming student as well.
How does Naviance help us with any of this or can it help us?
Naviance can help us with this.
Yeah, can we, you know, like do a special program or do an à la carte add-on to help the counselors, parents, students?
So, there are some features within Naviance that we're going to be exploring. What I will say is that for that success plan, we definitely want it in our student information system because we want that to be a living, breathing document that goes with that student wherever they may go.
Where's the ownership for documenting all these paths? Is that the student's obligation or does the school have to come with some sort of set criteria of how that looks?
As far as.
For one of the paths, the local path?
The seals?
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's something that as a school district, we, as administration and working with the board as well, we would decide it would be something that would go into our administrative guidelines.
And what's the date on that? Mr. Beerhoff, 2023, the seals?
Yes, yes.
So, this year's.
Now, 21 and 22 can earn those as well. So, this year's current freshman, what I just laid out to you, that is their graduation requirement. 21 and 22, they have the option of going with 20 or 23. Any other questions, concerns?
A lot of information, yeah.
Thank you. When do you see this sort of resolving itself? Is that, you said moving target?
Yeah, I hope that we get some clarity come this week or next from ODE. ODE has to set that cut score. I don't know that the House or the Senate are going to move any further with this going forward. At least that's what they shared in our legislative update a couple of weeks ago when we met with Senator Huffman. And Representative Powell was not there, but her, one of her representatives in her office was there. And they both stated that they were not going to be tinkering with this much more. Now, what that means, I don't know. But I would, I would bet that this is what we're going to have at least in place for a couple of years.
So, this week, the board received the report from Russ Gilmore, who is representative for the Miami Valley CTC. And one of his recommendations, a strong recommendation, if you all read it, was for us, urged us to look at, I guess, the options of moving CTC programming in-house.
Yeah, so what's called a satellite program. So, the CTC offers the opportunity for satellite programs in individual high schools. We had a conversation with Nick Weldy and CTC last fall about the possibility of a satellite program in robotics. We just couldn't get things where we needed to be. There's a couple moving pieces to it that we couldn't get quite worked out. But we can certainly revisit those conversations and if we've got Mr. Gilmore involved, I think that could be a good dialogue for us to have as well. He may have more insight that we could pull from.
But that was just for, oh, sorry.
I was just going to say the UC program that we brought in last year, those kids and those, they're not going to have any problems ticking off a lot of these because they're taking college credits and those tests and.
Right.
So, that's it.
Yeah, so things like the technology seal, that should be something that's very attainable for them because of that.
Yeah, and so when you were saying, I remember the whole robotic conversation because there was, one of our community members was very passionate about that. It happened to be that high school meeting when he spoke. So, getting back to Joelle's point, we're talking about one program.
Correct.
Yeah, so, yeah, so not saying we can have more than one, but it goes program by program. And we'd have to have, I'm guessing, so many kids enrolled to make it.
Yeah, they want at least 15 kids enrolled in the program. You have to designate a space for them, which, as crazy as this may sound, that can be an issue at the high school.
Yeah, right.
So, there's just some things that we would have to work out, the financials of it as well.
Is that something we need to explore as a board, like at a future work session?
It's definitely something we could talk about. I would caution us to take on too much. You know, if we're adopting Lean Six Sigma tonight, I think that's something we focus on for 2021 and maybe 21, 22. We start looking at other credential possibilities, whether that's through the CTC or elsewhere. But it certainly doesn't hurt to get some of those conversations going now.
I would agree with Mr. Beerhoff. I think that when we were working with the potential for the robotics, it's exciting and we were very excited about it, but we did have some things that we need to work through. Now that we have this Lean Six Sigma opportunity, I think that we need to kind of put our focus on that, do it well, and then keep our dialogue continuing. I know that the CTC, they only roll out so many per year, so they have to watch that as well. So, if we can stay cued and keep the dialogue going, then that can be another piece, definitely. Because I do think that we have a valuable force as well.
And they work with you on that number initially because they know you're building a program.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Beerhoff. Just one more thing and I'll start it and he may want to add to it. I know at your place settings you have this this evening and actually, when we talk about graduation, graduation requirements, a lot of that often is based on having great teachers in our classrooms to provide that. So, I'm saying, Mrs. Dunaway, did you not get one?
Oh, no, I have one.
Okay, good.
Remember, I got mine last Monday.
Yes, okay, so, yeah, anyway, this is a piece that through our assistant superintendent, Mr. Beerhoff, working with Mrs. Robbins, our communications person, we have this completed. It is a beautiful piece and it highlights our district and some of the things that we offer across our district. So, as we're out at job fairs and other opportunities, this would be a piece that highlights our vision, our strengths, our police statement that really activities and programs that are within our district.
I would just like to thank Mrs. Robbins. I brought an idea to her and the two of us sat down and we talked through it and we both had kind of the same vision with it and it looks great. And hopefully it helps us get one or two more of those great teachers.
It definitely mirrors the quality profile.
Yes.
You know what I mean?
Same graphic designer, yep.
It's very striking.
Thank you. All right, I think that's it unless you have any questions.
Anybody else on superintendent? All right, are there any citizen comments, Mrs. Cor? No? Okay, no citizen comments, moving on to TCEA comments, which is a new section that we've added. So, every month, we're going to have a placeholder and so Mrs. Yunker is going to address the board's line.
All right, for those that don't, do not know me, I'm Heather Yunker. I am the president of the Tipp City Teachers Association. And I want to thank the board for this opportunity every month to get to talk to you, get to talk to the community. Tonight, I just want to start out with one exciting event that we're going to have each year, the TCA. That's what we, that's our name. We do award two college scholarships to the graduating class. And this year, we're going to kind of try to spread that out a little bit. In years past, we've just had donations, generous donations from our district staff in order to award those two scholarships. And this year, we are excited to be partnering with Hickory River. And they are going to do a dine to donate on March 16th. And we are excited to have the community come out on that night. And 20% of the sales will go to our scholarship fund for our association and to worthy students. It's always a wonderful thing to be able to give back to our students like that. So, it will be March 16th and we do have flyers. I'll make sure that it's out on Facebook as well so that you can just use a mobile, your mobile device to take it in. Or you can just say it's for the Tipp City Teachers College Scholarship Fund.
Do you have to dine in?
You do not. You can dine in. It says dine in, carry out, or even drive through. So, we're pretty excited. You do not. You can dine in. It says, uh, dine in, carry out, or even drive through. So we're pretty excited about that. Um, they're also allowing our staff, which staff do not know this yet, but the staff are gonna be able to order their lunch that day and twenty percent of that will also go to the scholarship fund. So it is gonna be really big because that's gonna be a lot of orders. So we're excited about that. So again, thank you for the opportunity to come up here. And next time, we'll, you know, have something else. Maybe how much money we were able to...
Yeah, you can. We're thrilled to hearing from you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Okay, President comments. Um, first of all, I just want to take an opportunity to thank, uh, K-12 Consulting. We've been working with them on our superintendent search. And they have done what I think to be an outstanding job. We had over two dozen applicants. So the board has been very busy over the weekend, um, going through, geez, four hundred and five pages of information. It was a daunting task. It was very exciting. And tomorrow, the board will be meeting in the executive session where we will all compare notes and take that down to six or eight finalists that we will be interviewing to be our future superintendents. So super, super excited about that. And the other comment I have is to congratulate Kate Bean. He is our national, one of our national merit finalists. And out of one point six million students in, across the country, he is in the top one percent. So congratulations to Kate Bean. That's quite an exciting, um, accomplishment for him. Um, so at this time, I'm gonna hand it over to Mrs. Dahl, who has done some exciting things representing Tip City, and I'll let her share.
Yeah, so, um, with part of the Southwest OSBA Board, um, there's this guy who really kind of, um, helps us to become more of that mouthpiece like Mr. Verhoff was talking about. And so last Saturday, I went to Columbus and I testified for, um, Ed Choice Bill that, um, vouchers about going to, um, private schools. So I was able to go up there and speak to, um, the education committee about my feelings about that. And, um, there were a lot of really passionate people. It's a hot issue right now in education. Um, so it was just, it was an honor to go up there. And, and Mr. Verhoff, I did end my, um, comments by telling them that they need to have faith in us as educators, that we do care deeply about every student that comes through our doors. And, and we're making choices for the best of them. And that they would not be disappointed if they gave us back the control to continue to care and foster the education of our students. Um, I think here in Tip City, we do a wonderful job of that. And I wish we had more control in that. And, um, I cautioned Columbus about reaching into our pockets for taxes and, um, into our schools to further control how we can even teach and interact with our students. So, um, it was a wonderful opportunity to just be a mouthpiece, and I encourage everyone to do it. It was, um, it's a long day. But, um, go up there and let them know how you feel as parents, as teachers, as community members. Um, it's important. So, thank you.
Give me two, I'll give you two things. Did you sit with the, um, your athletic counselor? No?
No.
Okay, awesome. I was giving you extra credit. Well, yeah, so thank you for doing that. That's, um, that's incredible, so. Okay, so moving on to the meeting minutes. Um, did everybody have a chance to review the minutes and send any changes, amendments, amendments to Mr. Stevens? Okay. No, no edits?
Need to get a, an approval.
Well, do I have any?
Yeah.
Okay, so everyone saw your edges, okay.
So you need a motion to approve the many, meeting minutes of January twenty-first, January twenty-seventh, and February tenth.
We have to talk about the corrections.
So you're making a motion?
Yeah, we can make a motion.
Then we can talk about it, okay.
Are you making the motion, Joel? Okay, I'll second. So with the motion and a second to look at the meeting minutes for the, for the three meetings, does anybody have any discussion other than what Dave handed us?
I love this format.
Isn't it great? I love it. That was a great idea.
I put this together based on our discussion from last month.
From the work session?
Uh, no, no, this was, this was last January's regular meeting, um, where we had had some corrections and we just said that it was just some punctuation errors and things. And, uh, and, uh, Mr. Patrick indicated that these were, you know, if you hadn't seen these changes, they were different from what he had reviewed over the weekend. And so I think this right here is a good summary to show the items that have been found by the board members. And this is a clear, um, a clear document on what was found. Uh, now, there were some spelling issues that some board members found. We ignored those. We were basically just working.
Content-based, content-based.
And, and, you know, I, I really felt that it, we need to be respectful of Mr. Dave Lampy, our attorney, and make sure I spell his name right after four and a half years.
I told you.
Yeah, so, uh, those are our two changes, one for the January twenty-first work session and another...
I don't think he reads our minutes, so you don't have to worry. I don't, there's no chance of them finding out.
No, no, I, I didn't get any nasty email or anything. So, uh, these are the, these are the only two corrections that will be made to the minutes. And so I would state that we, um, include the motion to say as, as amended here. And then I will include this as a scan into the board documents and make sure that the meetings that are, the minutes that are approved online reflect these items in here as well.
Great. That's a clean way to handle it, so I kinda like that. Anybody else, any further discussion on that?
With that, then I'd move to amend the approval of the minutes as amended and presented by Mr. Stevens.
I'll second that.
As amended. Mr. Patrick? And Mrs. Heatherly, correct?
Yes.
All right. I think that's everything.
Okay, do you want to call for a vote?
Sure. Patrick?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Secor?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
We'll have those up tomorrow.
Wonderful. Okay, that takes us to the treasures report.
Do the motion.
You ready? Okay, I saw your...
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay, so can we get a motion to approve the treasures report?
I'll move.
Second.
Corinne and Ann. Any discussion? Do you have any, Dave?
I'm trying to pull up the report.
Hang on, mine just zipped off too.
Well...
There we go.
Uh, we're now seven months into the fiscal year, only five months left, and we're done. It's, uh, it's amazing how quickly we go through the school year. Um, so, um, there's nothing unusual that I can recall since I still haven't been able to pull it up. Does, does anybody have, failed to load the document. Oh, there it is.
Mine just came.
Awesome. Just go in here and check. Um, hon- honestly, every variance that we've had from the previous two fiscal years could all be explained by mostly timing of events. Uh, we did, uh, have the one-time donation, however, from, uh, the estate of Mr. Joseph Barnhart that was received back last year, January twenty nineteen. Uh, last year, that was a thirty thousand dollar donation. In total, I believe it was fifty-nine thousand dollars once it was all said and done. But, uh, so that's why other revenues last year is higher than, than this year.
And that went to the high school?
Uh, it's, it's been, uh, it's currently set aside for the high school. I believe that Mr. Zink is currently working on updating the, uh, the tech, um, the shop tools for safety issues and things. He's looking to, uh, also put a plaque designating, uh, Mr. Barn, uh, designated by, uh, proceeds from Mr. Barnhart.
That's very nice.
Yeah. I think he and Mr. Kitchen have, uh, some big ideas for that program.
Well, so many kids take that class that it's money all spent.
And I'm sure it's just a small portion of the total donation. Does anyone have any other questions that they have on the financial report? Yes, Mr. Patrick?
Can you explain a little bit more detail the differences between the general property tax revenue for, for fiscal year twenty twenty? You've got an explanation there on the revenue notes, but I'm not sure, right?
Sure. So, so every year in January, the board approves the treasurer to request advances in property tax revenue from the county auditor's office. And so, um, starting in January, we can contact the county auditor's office, ask them how much money has been collected so far and ask for an advance of that money. And so, uh, this year, we did three advances, I believe, uh, one in the last week of January and two in the first weeks of February. With final closeout, it should be either maybe the end of this week or early next, next month. We should have a final closeout. And that should be all of the remaining property taxes that were collected for this collection cycle. And so, um, it's a timing issue because, uh, uh, we requested to receive an advance of taxes in each fiscal year, uh, January of each year, but it's based on how much money they collected at that time. So the money that we got this year in January twenty twenty was much lower than the money that was available to us last year at the same time. So in the end, we'll still collect this around the same level of property taxes. It's just coming in at different times during that period.
And that's due to a, a recent rule change. Wasn't that what prompted that? There was a rule change that allowed us to access that advance rather than waiting for the end of the cycle?
No, no, we've been, we've been requesting advances. Now, we didn't a, a few years ago because I just completely forgot to ask for the money, so.
Well, I believe I reminded you. I knew you should have been doing that.
Yeah, so I, I got reminded by Mr., uh, a few people, so. So, I mean, because obviously, uh, every day that that money is in the bank, there's interest that we're not receiving, so.
Yes.
So now I make sure, contact county auditor representative, and every week I ask for our advance, so. Any other questions?
Seeing that there's none, call for vote.
Dahl?
Yes.
Secor?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Patrick?
I'm staying.
Okay, can I, uh, moving on to appropriation amendments, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, Heatherly and Dahl.
Uh, just the only two adjustments for this month. Uh, last month, we had the board approve a contract, uh, increase with the Miami County ESC. And that contract increase has now been, uh, adjusted on appropriations to show the increase for those expenses in the O-O-one general fund. Uh, the other change is we have received some local grants. I believe they were from the foundation, Tip City Foundation. I could be wrong. I don't mean to upset anybody if I get it wrong, but, uh, we did have an increase of five thousand seven hundred and eight dollars and seven cents. So our O-one-nine local grant fund has been increased for those expenses. And that's all we have. Any questions?
Seeing that there's none, call for roll.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Secor?
Yes.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to old business. Does anybody have any old business items? No? Okay, seeing that there's none. Dr. Comf, new business?
Yes, new business. Item A. Item A, uh, recommend action approval to accept the following retirements. Certified Kathy Witten, LT Ball intermediate, fourth grade teacher, May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, and classified Paula Iver, LT Ball cafeteria assistant cook, May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Motion in the second. Is there any discussion?
I just wanna thank them for their service and dedication to our schools. They've done a great job and, uh, definitely a great asset to our schools.
Ready for a vote? Yeah, you're fast.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Secor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, item B, recommend approval to accept the following resignations. And this be Angie Mack, fifth grade science teacher at LT Ball, Vettey July thirty-first, twenty twenty, and Jolus Lyman, assistant high school track coach of Vettey February fifth, twenty twenty.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Uh, quick question, uh, Fitzpatrick, ma'am.
Oh, sure. Wait, do you want me to do the motion in the second first? Motion in second?
It relates to the...
Oh, go ahead.
The, the motion.
Sure, go ahead.
Dr. Comf indicated July thirty-first for Ms. Mack, but it, on the thing, it says August thirty-first.
Thank you, Mr. Patrick.
So is it August thirty-first?
It is August.
Yeah.
Dahl? Good, that's a good question.
Oh, yeah, because August first is usually, so it should say July thirty-first.
What is her resignation website?
It says at the end of her contract.
It's her contract. Do you know how...
She's saying that because she, the insurance goes until then, so that's why she's...
To get thirty days of insurance.
But she will not be teaching at that point.
Correct.
Yeah.
But August thirty-first is correct.
August thirty-first is correct. Good, good, good catch, though. Because typically, it used...
Uh, do contracts end August thirty-first?
July thirty, July thirty-first.
So we're gonna amend this to say July thirty-first?
No, because she gets thirty days of insurance.
You get an extension of thirty days.
You get one of the insurance. Pastor Teaching Day.
Well, is there a rule saying that you have to be actively employed on the first day of the month, Dave?
Uh, they won't, she won't be, um, so their payments go through August, the second pay period of August.
Okay.
And so that's their last payment on their previous year contract. If it was a regular teacher that had no extended days, would be the second pay.
So she does qualify.
Yeah.
Great, good. Okay, so back to the, um, original, we have, uh, Heather, I believe, was it Heatherly and Dunaway?
Yes, it was.
Okay, is there any other further discussion?
Then I'd move to amend it to make it effective August thirty-first versus July thirty-first, which is how it was presented.
Oh, did she read July thirty-first?
I did.
Okay, okay.
Inadvertently, because that's what I'm used to, but I should have been reading what it said.
Gotcha, okay. So...
Can you do a second for the amendment?
So you amended it right, Simon?
I did.
Did you get a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Joel will second.
Because it, it says August thirty-first on here, though.
But she read it.
But she read it July thirty-first.
Maybe you should just say per the agenda.
Yes.
Yeah, remember, we used to do for the, as per the agenda, we need to go, that, that's a good point. We did that for like a year. Okay.
There's reasons for that.
Okay, so going back to the amendment, which is Simon and Joel, and so can we take a vote on that, on the amendment? Do you wanna read it, Dave? I think we know, but...
I'm getting there.
Go ahead, take your time. Don't rush, we're, we're good. So right now, we're voting on the amendment and then we'll go back to the...
So that was Mr. Patrick and...
And Mrs. Heatherly.
Okay.
Call for the vote?
Patrick?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Secor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I.D.C. recommend approval of the following substitute positions for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year pending proper certification and paperwork as per the agenda.
There you go. That's great.
I'll move.
I'll second. We forgot about that nice little trick. Okay, uh, moved, uh, moved and seconded, uh, Dahl and Dunaway. Is there any discussion? Seeing that there's none, ready for a vote?
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Secor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item D, recommend approval of the following supplemental positions for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year as per the agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, moved and seconded, that's Dunaway and Dahl. Any discussion? It's hard, there's a lot of D's. Any discussion? Okay, ready for a vote?
Dunaway?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Secor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item B, recommend to amend the following supplemental coaching position for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year. K.B. George, Devil Air's program assistant, pay up to eight hundred dollars from Devil Air's account, originally approved as an unpaid position on May twentieth, twenty nineteen.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Moved and seconded, Heatherly, Dunaway.
So we hired her unpaid, did she already fulfill this position or not?
She's still currently working with the Devil Air's program.
So, so why's it changing?
Yeah.
This is, uh, the Devil Air's coach, Molly, can't think of her middle...
Offsinger.
Molly Noffsinger indicated that the Devil Air's program would like to pay her for her time and compensation for being the dance coach for this season that she's been working.
Oh, so it's just...
So this is, this is out of the fundraising.
So was it just a volunteer?
Yes.
Oh, unpaid, unpaid, okay. That was really nice of them. Oh, that's really nice.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
The, the, the Devil Air's, it's their money in the two hundred account, and they're asking us to provide funding to her for that work, and we can't approve that.
Okay, that's really nice. Any further discussion?
So is this gonna be a paid position from now on? Is this just a one-time payment?
Okay.
Unless they could announce they want to do that on another year.
Because I'm just wondering if other people, if they would have known that they, it was gonna be paid, might have applied for this position originally. I mean, because they, you apply for a volunteer position, but then it ends up being... I mean, because you apply for a volunteer position, but then it ends up being a paid position, I'm not sure that that.
That's for the Devil Airs to determine what they want to do, I mean, it also.
I mean, it might be for the Devil Airs to determine, but it's for this board to understand the perception that we said it's going to be an unpaid position and now halfway into it, now we're going to turn it into a paid position.
Yeah, it sort of sets a precedent for other volunteers.
Right.
For whom we don't compensate because they haven't fundraised anything to compensate.
To this degree, right.
Appreciation to their volunteers, that's really what this is, this is.
So.
We're not arguing with you, Dave, we're just wondering what the precedent it creates.
That we're setting by.
Uh, I think it's their decision on what they want to do. It's their funding, their line.
But we approved it as an unpaid position, when they came to us and asked.
We're just the fiscal agent for their funding.
You might be the fiscal agent for their funding, but this is a board that decides to be fair to our community and people that are applying for jobs.
Well.
So, was this orig, so I think I understand the question that you two are asking, so did we originally approve this as, like, when we do the, you know, the volunteers, the game workers and all that type of thing? So, was she originally approved, I'm guessing in the fall, as a volunteer?
In May of twenty nineteen.
May of twenty nineteen, okay.
She was approved on a list of supplement workers and by her name, there was nothing noted for payment.
Okay, gotcha, so last May.
So.
Correct.
Okay, so let me ask this. Prior to this current school year, did we use to compensate that position?
I would have to look, because I do not know.
Um, I think it was under music boosters and then they separated.
That's true, but we did have them last year under us as well.
No, I understand that, I just wondered if they were compensated out of that fund when they were under music boosters.
No, because we didn't, we weren't the fiscal agent at that time for that group.
Okay, oh, did they do it?
They came from the music boosters over to us.
Gotcha.
They used to be with us and then they left, they went to the music boosters and then they asked to come back.
I can't remember that, okay.
It's just, I don't know how I feel about.
This is a new situation, I don't remember this ever cropping up before, so.
We approved her originally as a volunteer and now it's going to get paid, I'm just. And, and I understand what you're saying, Dave, I just, I don't know how I feel about a board member, as a board member approving that change from unpaid to paid halfway through.
Anybody else have any discussion?
I, I absolutely hear what you're saying.
Mm-hmm.
I, and I can't speak directly for the Devil Airs, I think that Ms. George ends up having, in fact, I think she's working with Mama Mia production and, and that she does have a background in dance. And I think that the value that she's brought to their team that they've seen over a period of time and that's why they have kind of, to this thought.
Right, well, this isn't anything about that person.
Yeah.
It's about.
The process.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I'm sure that obviously, she's probably done a wonderful job, or we wouldn't even be here with this question.
Preserved.
So, I, that's just, I think, part of the thought process there.
Right.
Which, you said we're reacting as a fiscal agent, what, what funded is this coming out of?
Two hundred fund agency. The financial statements is reported separately, indicating that it's money that we have in our accounts, but it's not our money.
And do we have an agreement that, that the school district is responsible to, to act in certain ways based on an agreement and requests made from that?
Not that I'm aware of, just that it's a fund that is providing their own money for their activities.
Do you remember in any previous years, an action similar to this?
I don't.
When somebody asked when you go from unpaid, paid, I'm sure it's happened.
I can't think of anything, can you, I mean, because the person is probably been doing for me.
If, if I can understand this, because I wasn't involved, so you're, we're basically holding their money, correct?
That's correct.
So, how do we have justification to not allow them to have their money?
Well, because we hire, we approve her.
Last May.
Last May to be a volunteer worker for Devil Air.
By the board, so.
By the board, so she was appro, she was approved as an unpaid volunteer.
Okay, and now we're changing.
And that's what she was applying midway in, right, so now I'm wondering, every time we have postings for unpaid volunteer coaches positions.
Now, we're changing the rules. But the fact, it, it does sound a little unique because it's their money, so can you not just alter that in the way of a motion to allow them, I guess I don't really. Are, are you thinking more in terms of long-term, what we're setting and making for?
Well, if we don't.
Right. So, imagine all these positions, this is, this is my thing about being fair.
Yeah.
You, let's say you wanted to apply for this position, but you're like, oh, it's unpaid, I got this gig down at the coffee shop, I can make some extra money, I really can't, even though I really like being involved with kids, I can't afford to do it. And then later to find out that it was paid.
Yeah.
Right, and I'm, again, this is nothing about the person in this position, I'm sure she's wonderful, obviously, they want to pay her for it now.
I'm sure. It's the principle.
Yes.
I'm sure you don't.
There's nothing I can do, I mean, we're a partner, we don't.
No, 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 I wasn't. You're not, are you trying to read my mind, David Stevens? No, my question is this, I, I, I'm trying to, you know, understand everybody's point and hear them clearly and I get, I get what you're saying, it's precedent, it's expectation, you know, it's all of that, it's policy. Did anybody else apply for this position?
I have no idea.
Okay, and I, and I didn't think you would, I was just, you know what I'm saying, because then, if no one else applied, then at least we know nobody else applied and there weren't four people trying to decide, can I, is it volunteerism or is it me making extra money for X, Y, Z? So, okay.
I do recall sometimes that there have been coaches that were paid out of fundraising money that were added after, we didn't have, we hadn't approved them, but someone must have approved them as a volunteer. Right, so, I, I, I don't know that, I mean, this is a great discussion, I think we should move on the motion and recommend the release of their fundraising money to compensate this person and I think we're going to probably need to revisit procedurally.
Well, actually, what the motion says is approval to amend the following supplemental coaching position. So, amending that after the fact?
We could revisit it and add it to.
Yeah, this could be a discussion.
I would move to table this, this item so that we can review certain policies, including sixty-six, ten, fifty-eight, thirty. As well as ninety-seven hundred, which relates to student activity fund, student fundraising.
What were those again, Simon, can you read them?
Sixty-six, ten.
Policy sixty-six, ten is the student activity fund policy. The policy fifty-eight, thirty, student fundraising. And policy ninety-seven hundred, which is referencing sixty-six, ten, and I had a chance to cross-reference those. I would state personally, I don't see anything wrong with letting them do what they think is best, but I think they need to figure out what we're permitted to do and authorized to, to do, and then once we review that, we can come back and revisit this.
So, do we have a motion to table? Well.
That's correct.
Yes, Simon was reading the policies and he, are you going to make the, did you make an actual motion?
I, I.
Okay, go ahead, I'll second. So, we have a motion and a second.
Again, I'm going to need the wording on what you want for that.
Motion to.
I think.
Prepare the policy and reserve it on the theory. Motion to table.
Well, I think I guess, I think procedurally, and I'm not an expert here, I think that was improper for me to move to amend it, it's more of a suggestion to, to table it and then.
Well, do you want to amend it or table it?
Well, I'm not sure, I'm.
Because if, yeah, because if you're going to table it, we don't need a motion, but if you do want to amend it, then we can move to amend it, does that make sense?
So, we have a motion.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, but we did, I did second it, so.
Yeah, so I think that we just.
Getting more layered here.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we just go with the, the, the motion that's been seconded to table this for further, further analysis.
Yes, there you go, further policy.
Maybe we can talk about it the next work session. So, then I guess I would move to, the, the official motion, we move to table this for the next work session, so that policies.
Sixty-six, ten. Sixty-six, ten.
Ten.
Fifty-eight.
Thank you, fifty-eight, thirty and ninety-seven hundred can be reviewed.
Go ahead, Dr. Combs.
Just, uh, look at thirty-one, twenty, twenty-nine.
Add that one too? Okay, and add thirty-one, twenty.
Twenty point oh nine.
Point oh nine, Dave. So, sixty-six, ten, fifty-eight, thirty, ninety-seven hundred, three, one, two, zero, point oh nine. Okay, cool.
That's Patrick and.
Patrick and Dunaway.
Okay, Patrick?
Call for vote?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Cor.
Staying.
Motion carries.
Item F, approval of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two calendar.
Can I get a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second. Dahl, Heatherly. Any discussion on the calendar? We all, I think we all started the work session. Call for vote?
Dahl?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Cor.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item G, approval of the following overnight and out-of-state trip, high school track, April seventeen to end eighteen, high school baseball, April twenty-five to twenty-six.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Dunaway, Dahl? Any discussion? Seeing that there's none, Mr. Stevens?
Dunaway?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
DeCor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item H, approval of contract with Lean Six Sigma to attain the yellow belt, green belt and train the trainer certification for Tip City Schools. Two, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, fifteen thousand five hundred, twenty twenty, twenty, twenty-one, fifteen thousand five hundred, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, three thousand every year thereafter.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded Dahl and Heatherly. Any discussion?
Yes. Where's the data in terms of how many kids are going to be affected by this? For thirty thousand dollar district investment and three thousand dollars yearly thereafter, my questions are, how many students are going to be affected by this? What are we doing to fill the three-point gap difference between nine points afforded through Six Sigma and the, the twelve points that's required by the state? I haven't heard of a plan that's going to fill in those three points, so I'm just kind of concerned. The useful, usefulness of this presently is like a half-built bridge, I'm not sure where it's going to take us if we don't have the whole. Credential to meet that graduation halfway. And then the third component I haven't really heard about are the teachers. What's this going to look like for the teachers?
The ones that are trained, you mean?
Yes.
Okay.
Who, where, where is, how's that going to look at the high school? What are those teachers saying, who are those? I just feel like there's a lot of gaps here that just are not answered, particularly when we have that three thousand dollar yearly thereafter maintenance fee. I would echo some of those concerns, I'm concerned with this having a continuing, a vote that continues the three thousand dollar investment without any benchmarks to evaluate the effectiveness of the program. Um, while I, I enjoy the presentation on it, I also have concerns about us adopting new curriculum when we have a curriculum. Policy and we have a committee that's looking and evaluating social studies at this time, again, I enjoy that, the presentation that we had, that was a great addition, it gives us another avenue for students who are looking for a different graduation. Component to fulfill, I don't have a problem with that, but I would really like to see how we're going to apply it and I would, I'm not in favor of us continuing to approve the three thousand every year unless. I'm, I'd like to see a limit on that, it can be added to future agendas when it's time for renewal, if that's the case.
So, yeah, did you want, go ahead, do you want to answer this as a course?
So, I'll start it with, with, you know, the, the aspect of the number of students and, and how many that will pack. So, I will say that's a bit unknown at this time, we do know that we intend to embed it in classes that we already have. And I'll let Mr. Verhoff kind of talk about the teachers that we've approached and their level of interest in this. It is a program that I will see that will grow, it's much like our IT program with UC, part of it is that, you know, it's a sound program, it has proven itself elsewhere and that, you know, we. We are looking at being progressive and providing something and know that it's something we establish and grow it. And so, I do see it as a piece that will grow, much like our IT program will be growing and we're excited to have that. And then you had one other.
Three-point gap.
Three-point gap, so the three-point gap, the two areas that have been, I would say, proposed to us is the area of technology, that that's a, a three-point, that's a, a, an additional piece that can be used and utilized by students. And then the other one would be even to be offering a CPR piece that, that they said that is common that's being used among districts. So, it is a piece that we will be exploring, but I also think that there's other things that students will be doing that can work toward that.
So, what was that first piece, I'm sorry, not the CPR, the one before, the technology?
With technology.
And that's considered an industry credential, because I didn't read that on the website, or did you? I, I saw that fitting into other areas, but as far as an actual industry credential.
It was one that Lean Six themselves had provided to us, so whether, and I know that they have been successful working with Graham, so I, I cannot say that Graham definitely is using that path, but I think that they are basing it off experience.
So, is it the administrator's position that we have in place presently, twelve points formalized to meet that twelve-point requirement for industry credentialing?
That we have it in place?
Once Six, if, if in fact, Six Sigma becomes part of our program, is it at that point, if it's approved tonight, do we have those other three points mapped out? I'm really concerned about spending thirty thousand dollars of taxpayer money, and like I said, this is like a half-built bridge that takes you nowhere until you can meet those twelve points. Because that is a requirement, you know, we covered that up here in Mr. Verhoff's presentation. That's just one aspect of this, again, we don't know the number of students this may impact, we don't know what the teachers are feeling or what, you know, who those teachers will be and, and. I think Mr. Verhoff answered that during the presentation back in January, he said that he had, I won't speak for you, Mr. Verhoff, but I recall you saying that you had approached several teachers or, several teachers had evaluated the program and they were endorsing it.
That, that's correct, and we met with Mr. Hummel in a separate meeting where they got more familiar with the program as well. Um, I would also add that one of the seals that you can earn for the graduation pathways is just an industry credential. It doesn't have to be a twelve-point credential, that's one of the ones that was listed there and I know that was hard to read.
Yes, but that's under a separate component, is it not, you're required to get two seals.
Correct.
That doesn't, that doesn't negate the other requirement for the industry credentialing pathway.
You don't have to have twelve to get a graduate.
You don't have to have twelve for the seal.
No.
You would need twelve if you weren't.
I'm not saying the seal.
I understand, you wouldn't need twelve for the seal, you would need twelve if you weren't needing competency scores on the testing.
Correct.
So, how many, I think what Anne's question is, how many students do we think, looking at our scores right now, would need to get twelve to earn a, earn a diploma?
Right, like how many, how many?
I would say approximately twenty.
Okay.
And then, and then in every, like in every class.
And we have.
Continuing to that discussion.
It's usually about where, where we're at, it's between five and ten percent are those that are at risk and am, possibly needing an alternative pathway. We do have the twelve-point credential in home building, and that's broken down into a, two, three-point credentials and a six-point credential. So, a student very well could take Lean Six Sigma as a class with Mrs. Malat. Earn nine cred, nine points there and then take home building for a semester and earn a three-point credential there and that packaged together would be a twelve-point credential. We could, we're also looking at Mr. Albert's technology classes and seeing where we might be able to insert a Microsoft Word credential or a PowerPoint credential. On Wednesday, a group of teachers and I are going down to Harrison High School to visit their program, they've adopted Lean Six. Look at how they're implementing that, how they're working towards a twelve-point credential, they're also using it in their advisory period, they have two. They're also using it in their advisory period. They have two forty-minute advisories a month where students work on industry credentials. So we're going to explore that as well to see how that would look during our extended advisory periods.
So it sounds like that's kind of what we want.
Yeah, I, I do appreciate all the information. I'm just saying I don't feel, and I, and I do appreciate helping the, that body of students. Because I am a huge fan of two-year degrees and ten degrees. It is the wave of the future. There's going to be so much demand to repair the infrastructure of the first half of the, of the twentieth century. I get all that. I'm just concerned that I'm not sure we have worked and ironed out the details enough to be making a commitment of taxpayers' dollars to thirty thousand dollars at this point with a three thousand dollar annual thereafter. And one other key question, if we don't make that commitment now, how quickly can you pick that back up? If you're trying to roll out for the fall, I get that. So if it doesn't roll out for the fall, for whatever reason, then I'm assuming it would have to be the following fall? Or can you go for semester?
It would most likely be that following fall.
Could we, you know, could, could we maybe put this on the agenda for next month so that, you know, we can have time to see a, a bigger picture of how it's going to fit into our schools? Or is the timeline like they need to know by the end of February?
Ideally, we've set out that we might want to have it on the, the agenda earlier, but that we were giving it this additional month. But once again, we could go back and talk with them and let them know that we need additional time. I do think the visit to Harrison's going to be a very important one for us. That is the twenty-sixth.
So then, then we can see how. I mean, I'm, I think I'm a huge fan of it. I think it's.
Actually, there's a team going to Harrison.
Oh, to go into Harrison.
And develop collaborative learning. I mean, everybody knows I love it, but so that's the point.
Yeah. I understand, and we've actually done this at our company, so I, I, I have ten years of.
It's a real life.
I have real-life experience with this. It's a, it's an awesome program. Seth Hummel did a great job presenting, and I can see how it can be applied in our district. From doing, from having a personal, you know, han- hands-on with this, it's leadership-based. So my biggest concern is, you know, we're getting a new superintendent in, you know, three weeks. What if we get, if we get that new superintendent and, and that person, he or she says, okay, let me tell you something. We did this in my previous district or my previous, previous district, and this is why it didn't work. Or maybe they will love it, but I think to, to do something like this that is so leadership-based with a new superintendent coming in literally in a couple of weeks, at least choosing that person, I don't feel like it's right to saddle them with this decision. I feel like the new person should be able to have some say in this because it is leadership-based. If you don't have leadership at the top with this program, it's not going to filter down, and it's not, it's not going to work. So that, that would be, that would be my two cents.
And I love the program. I think.
Oh, I love it too.
Setting a superintendent up for success. If we developed a collaborative practice of working through and problem-solving as teachers, and then it filters down into the classroom where we also then mirror to them, this is collaborative, this is creative, this is working together. But I understand that you don't have questions answered of what this is actually going to look like.
I'm not feeling that much love, I guess I'm saying, because I'm not, because I'm not feeling the details behind it. And I'm kind of a detail.
Time for details.
I'd like to have more about the students. I'd like to know more about the teachers. You know, what is their vision, excitement? How many teachers are there? How many, how many teachers with this effect?
And exactly how many students is going to impact?
How many students?
Is it two? Is it two? Is it twenty? Is it thirty?
I want to feel more of that love, I guess. Just want to feel more of that.
Mr. Beerhoff?
Yes.
Can you help Anne fall in love with this program? Can you give her a roadmap of loving this program?
I can certainly try.
And me.
Thank you, Mr. Beerhoff.
Want you to.
I, it does make a big difference on spending thirty thousand dollars if it impacts five students or if it impacts thirty. I mean, that's, that's a big difference.
I think one of the things that Seth was mentioning in his presentation is for all students. So I know we're talking about those that are in risk about credentials and things of that nature.
This could be their one way to a diploma, but more than.
Yes, and, and so that's a big thing, but, you know, it's for all students. And, and I, I know we're kind of pacing about making sure that people are on board and ready for it. And I think that we probably could get an additional month if we need that. I do know that they will be at a cutoff point because there's other districts that want it, and they only bring so many on board each year. And ideally, I would love to see that for our students and for our district. And I do see it as a, a great opportunity.
Well, it would be interesting, on March tenth, we're doing our final interviews. Or even on March second and third, we're doing the in-person interviews, back-to-back days. We could add this question. Do you have any, have you had any experience with Lean Six Sigma in any of your current or prior districts? And that might be some good feedback for us as a district. Going back to your original question of when you ask an employee, you don't know what you're going to get, you know, like in exit interview. So yeah, we might get some very interesting information from these eight interviewees that we can even feedback to yourself and Mr. Beerhoff.
I would say when I look at districts across the state though, I, I don't know that there are vast numbers that are doing. Because I mean, Graham is our closest, and then Harrison is in the Cincinnati area. But I do think it is a strong program that is going that direction.
I, I just want to speak to the point, Dr. Kump, where you, you talked about Mr. Hummel being, I mean, I remember that session well. Because I put a lot of research into this, and one of my questions was at the conclude, towards the conclusion of that presentation is, um, once we become certified, our instructors for Six Sigma, what is required for maintenance after that?
I remember that.
And the response was?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Yeah.
But now we're learning there's a three thousand dollar annual yearly thereafter fee. I just feel that we need to start kind of piecing all the puzzle together before we jump on. That's all I'm saying.
Mr. Beerhoff, this board brought this recommendation to you, and I appreciate all the work that you've invested in, in district and out of district to, to vet it. And I think that we, as a board, it sounds like we are interested in pursuing it. I wonder if the way that it's been presented is the price point that Mr. Hummel presents to other schools. And we just don't have a breakdown of what those expenses are.
It's in the, it, it, this is the exact proposal that I think was sent in a Friday board update back in early January. Actually, it might be a little bit less, uh, because I've talked with other curriculum directors about this, and they're looking at it. And so Mr. Hummel has taken some of our costs off of that as a referral discounts. The three thousand dollar a year thereafter that was mentioned that evening as a fee to access the online curriculum and materials.
I don't recall that. I don't recall that we had any prices that night. They could have been embedded into this attachment in the Friday board update. Okay. Any concerns about us introducing this subject in addition to us already looking at social studies? I mean, is that what we've done in previous years to adopt new curriculums mid-year?
I think curriculum is something that we always have to be evaluating, and when we see opportunities that are going to be meaningful and valuable for students, then we need to pursue those. So I don't, I don't see this as something that we need to hold off on just because we're not in a curriculum year. In addition to that, I would say that this is something that fits in some of our elective courses that, um, may take some time before they come back around with the curriculum cycle.
Okay. So am I hearing that we want to maybe table this until we get some feedback from your visit at Harrison High School?
I.
I think that's what, I think I hear a lot of people saying is that they need to do this.
Okay.
So let's, let's just table this. To next month, we'll get some details. Mr. Beerhoff's going to make sure Mr. Cor falls in love with it.
Yes.
And, and also, I don't know if you guys realize it, it won't act, students won't actually be using this during the first year.
No, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, you're going, we're, you train, train, like it's a district for teachers. I plan on going. I don't know if you guys plan on going. It's usually, like in Springfield, we do it, it's four to seven. It's amazing. So, I mean, it's really, it's a culture changer.
So, so let's say that again. They have, you started for the.
Because you have to train teachers to be.
It's very leadership-based.
To get their green belts and black belts and whatever.
They have to be certified in order to certify. So you do that like your first.
So the first year is just training your teachers to take this tool to create creative collaborative problem solvers back into the classroom. So they learn through actually being creative and solving problems that our district is having right now. Whatever problems they see. Maybe if they don't like the lines for the Coke machine during lunch, I don't, whatever. You know, it could be bigger problems, and they work through a problem-solving session, and then they take it back into the classroom.
That could be a big problem if you were all like that, Kump.
It could be. It could be. You only got twenty minutes.
So is that how you see it? Is the first year of this training?
There's some different ways that you can implement it.
Because you mentioned, right, some classes in the fall.
Correct.
Am I wrong?
Correct.
So, listen, sit right down.
What Mr. Hummel presented to us.
Yeah, yeah, I assume that they wouldn't be in the classroom.
Yes.
What, what Mr. Hummel presented to us was. Six training sessions.
Right.
Three eight-hour sessions for the Yellow Belt. Then an additional three eight-hour sessions for Green Belt and Train the Trainer.
Right, but the kids would be taking classes in the fall.
So they're going to, so we're going to have some people that are doing this.
If we move now in the spring, we would be able to have the training so that it would be able to be implemented in the fall.
I thought, see, what are your awesome questions?
Which is exciting, that we don't have to wait another year.
Yes. Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Cor.
So do we?
Yeah, we're going to table it to next month.
So do we need to make an amendment then?
I don't know.
Simon, do we need to just vote on it or amend it? Or they want to table it?
I moved to amend the motion.
Okay.
To say that.
Table it until when? The next board meeting?
To, to have the board explore this further in the next board session.
Okay. And so, yeah, so I guess, um, Dr. Kump, are you going to Harrison, or is that just you, Mr. Beerhoff?
It is myself, Mr. Zink, Mr. Crispino, um, and five teachers.
So maybe we could do some kind of an email or include something in the Friday board update?
Certainly.
So that we have that additional information, and then we could table this. Simon, on your amendment, do you want to just say until the next board meeting? That gives us enough time to get to Harrison.
Or to whenever the board convenes again.
Yeah, well, the next board meeting, right? Because they want to get it answered.
With, with some work sessions in between, most likely.
I suspect that I'm hearing we don't want to delay.
So don't long, yeah. Because, right, because Mr. Hummel has other schools that are kind of in the queue, so to speak.
Madam President, the next regular board meeting will take place Monday, March sixteenth.
Yeah, and that's at the high school, and we have a lot of stuff on that one already.
Oh, so you want to wait till?
Very full.
Okay.
What, what is your timeline on getting back to Mr. Hummel, do you think?
Uh, tomorrow was the day.
Oh, it was, so this has to be the next board meeting.
So yeah, so I, I informed him about where we are on this.
Okay. Or we could always vote on it at the work session.
Go into a special meeting, yeah.
We can vote on it at the work session. That gives us a couple of.
Which work session?
Um, yeah, we don't have any because of the interviews.
All these special meetings, but we could vote on it before.
We, we'll just, yeah, we don't put a timeline, just say, yeah.
At a future meeting.
Yeah, just at a future meeting, yeah.
May I just throw in a little caveat in all of this?
Try to get my phone up to the other meeting.
Mrs. Yerzer is going to be speaking to us regularly.
Yeah.
What about?
You want her to present?
No, but I was thinking, it would, since you're going to have five teachers attending that session, either a synopsis based on your feedback from those teachers or the teachers themselves. I don't, you know, in the interest of time, whether, but I just feel like there should be a voice here coming from.
Typically, Mr. Beerhoff would voice their, their concerns and comments and things like that.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I understand that, but this is such a leadership development program, and there has to be the buy-in. And that's where I'm saying, I just, I don't, it's not like.
I can definitely meet with.
You know what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, I, I do, I do, and, and that's something that Mr. Beerhoff and I can talk about. That he's always done a great job of voicing the concerns of the staff or, you know, there's, you know, buy-in.
Constituting.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah. And I work well together.
He shared that in January, that there was buy-in by the staff, and I trust his leadership. He's done a good job vetting this to this point, and I trust that he can summarize what happens after the tour and bring some answers back to satisfy our questions, and we can move on it quickly.
Okay, so back to the original amendment. Simon, do you want to reread that, Dave? What we're, what's, what the amendment was?
Moved to have the board explore this further in a future meeting.
Perfect. I'll second. Moved and seconded, Simon and Dunaway. Ready for a vote?
Patrick.
Yes, Dunaway.
Yes.
Doll.
Yes.
Heatherly.
Yes.
Zuccor.
Yes.
Motion carries. Oh, Lawn Care.
All right, we're up to Lawn Care. Uh, that is item I. Recommend approval to accept the Lawn Care program bid from Evergreen Lawn Care Incorporated in the yearly amount of fifty-eight thousand five hundred for a two-year contract, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one.
I'll make the motion. I'll second. Dunaway and Heatherly. Any discussion? Seeing that there's none?
Dunaway.
Yes.
Heatherly.
Yes.
Doll.
Yes.
Patrick.
abstain.
Zuccor.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item J, recommend to appoint the treasurer as the designated to receive public records training on behalf of all the members of the Tipton City Board of Education.
My motion.
Second.
Zuccor and Doll. Any discussion?
I just have a question here, and then once the treasurer does that, he will. Is there any need to impart that information with the board, Dave, or is there?
Well, for years, the, oh gosh, which office is over that? I think that's the treasurer's office, State of Ohio's overseeing of public records training.
It is.
I'm sorry, no, 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 it's the.
It's favor.
The auditor's office.
Oh, it's not?
Auditor's paper.
Okay.
And he's indicated that this, that his office is looking to revise the requirement, because this is, this is an ORC requirement. And it states that all board members must attend public records training at least once after their, um, their initial appointment to the board, and then any successful appointment thereafter, so once every four years. However, the board can also appoint and does he need to attend the training on their behalf. However, Mr. Faber's indicated that he feels it's important that board members attend this training, and they're looking for ways to train to make it so that board members can take this training online rather than having to go to Columbus or attend a training session at a location. Because, um, this is, this is a training where, once they shut the doors, if you miss it, you miss it. You can't, even if you show up five minutes late, you won't get full credit.
What is the duration? Is it like an hour?
It's three hours.
It'd be nice if they could include that at Capitol Conference because we're all there.
Right.
Because for people to take off a day, you know, a half-day off, it's a full day off work with, for us to travel to Columbus.
Well, that's why they're looking to put it online.
Yeah.
And take away the requirement that they designate to attend in their place.
Yeah.
So that has, I have not seen anything on that. It's made more careful that's what they're going to do. I just remember that was an idea that he had in place in his mind soon after he was elected.
So when do you have to go to the training? Do you know yet?
It'll probably be in April when I attend the OASB conference.
Okay, good, so at least you can double up, okay.
So, and that will still, as it's presently written?
Because right now I have to attend because of Mr. Patrick.
And you too, because anytime the new board goes, you have to go again.
Because of you, you have to go.
Because of you too.
I think at Fairborn, if the personnel director has to go. Seen him there before, and he's like, well, I'm here again.
Hey, do you want us to send our HR director? We can send our HR director. Oh, we don't have an HR director. Oh, shame on me.
This is procedural, so I move that way. Go ahead with the vote.
Okay, any, any further discussion?
You're more than welcome to find a location and make one, and you can say you took it.
Okay, ready for the vote?
Zuccor.
Yes.
Doll.
Yes.
Dunaway.
Yes.
Heatherly.
Yes.
Patrick.
Thank you.
No.
Hang on, whoa, wait, we're still voting. Motion carries. Motion carries. Okay, citizen comments.
Um, I don't know, I see a lot of new faces here. We do have a, a closing session for comments. Did anybody want to sign that didn't get an opportunity to sign to speak?
Okay, so for citizen comments, we have Mrs. Kathy Bowman. Kathy, you have five minutes, and Mr. Stevens will set the timer for you. So hang on, give him a second.
All right.
Ready? Do you want to put it on the screen?
I will.
Oh, good. That way she can kind of see. Kathy, when you see it start, when it comes up?
Oh, I was waiting for her to start. That way she uses the extra time.
Okay, go ahead. That's fine. I don't see it up there. Go ahead, Kathy.
And I'm usually up here grumbling about something, taxpayer money. At the last meeting, I brought up Tipton Pride, so I was, I was contacted by Mr. George, and we set up a little meeting and had a meeting. He gave me a little copy of a worksheet. This is the same thing you'll see in the Tipton Gazette, if you get one, um, because he also talked to Nancy Bowman and Carla Ungerite of the Tipton Gazette, so they could get some transparency out about their funds. A little confused about the construction, the general fund at the top they had, because while I was at the meeting, he told me that they hadn't, they didn't pay for any of the general construction, the beginning of the site work, the engineering part. the beginning of the site work, the engineering part. And I do have copies that Dave Stevens gave. We have checks where, uh, TIP School and TIP City paid for design, so I do have some of those checks. So I'm a little confused about their initial amount that they paid ninety-five thousand when, uh, you know, I don't know if he didn't include those checks in there, or if he did include them and he just didn't say, because as he broke it down to phase one, he had Premier Health, TIP Pride, then phase two, TIP Government, and TIP Pride again. Um, he did tell me that they do have meetings when they have enough board members, um, show up at those meetings. So sometimes those get canceled. Um, but my initial thing was that the new stadium was to be built with private funds and not TIP City taxpayer funds, whether that's TIP City taxpayer or TIP City school funds. I thought TIP Pride was gonna raise this money, and, um, even though they're volunteers, and I appreciate volunteers, believe me, I volunteered for stuff all my life, so I know the daunting task of being a volunteer and asking people for money, and asking them again for money, and not wanting them to ask again for money, and, and going after that. So I appreciate that they are out there. They have, were doing, um, seemed to be a great job in the beginning. They got a little bit, uh, lax over Christmas, said they wanted to spend it with their families, so they're back out there again. And they decided after, um, I had complained a few times that maybe they needed to, to let everybody know what was going on, and that's when they contacted TIP Gazette as well. Um, however, they would not show me. They did show me their little list of expenditures. Um, I did get a glance at those. I was not permitted to look at their donation list, even though I showed them the compliance guide for their five oh one C three. They assured me that it's a very gray area, and they wanted to stay in that gray area and not show me any of that information. And I opened the book and showed it to them again, and they said, no, it's a gray area, we're not showing it to you. So they did refuse to show me any of those things. Um, but all in all, all I can say is, you know, I hope they are gonna continue to try to raise some money. They have a meeting the second Tuesday of every month at the Eagles upstairs at six o'clock, if they have board members that show up. Mr. Kaufman did resign from his position as treasurer, so I'm not sure how that's going to go. Um, because now they're gonna have to look for another new treasurer again. Um, but I just had questions about the money and, and why TIP Schools, and they, and he did assure me that, you know, they do their best, but if they didn't raise it, the TIP City would end up, you know, footing the bill, whether that's the school, whether that's TIP City. It is owned by TIP City. So they may end up footing the whole bill if they don't get, get enough money as far as donations to finish it. Uh, he said they don't have enough to do the bleachers as of yet. Um, but he said anybody's welcome to look at that little expenditure sheet of theirs if you'd like. Not allowed to look at the donations, and you are allowed to come to any meeting that you want to for them. Um, supposedly, they're gonna have a fish fry in, in April. And he did say that the, I said, asked him why the, they weren't at the board meetings for TIP City Schools, or at least letting somebody know what's happening with them all the time, and they wanted an invitation for you guys. Yeah, I don't know if that's a formal invitation on paper, whatever you wanna do, but they want a little invitation to keep you up to date, which I think that's what is needed. I mean, if they're gonna be using money, whether it's through the school, and the school has written checks, and TIP City has written checks, I think that it's our taxpayer money out here, and I think we should be asking those questions and making sure that, you know, TIP Pride does what it was originally designed to do, what all those people jumped up and said they were gonna do, and, and I think that they should just need to be held accountable, and they need transparency, which you can have half of their transparency, but not all of it. You can't look at everything, but you can look at a few things. All right, Dave, I'm done. Time's up.
Thank you, Kathy. We appreciate your comments. Dave, I'm gonna pass this sheet down to you, because I know you make a record of it. Okay, seeing that there's no more citizen comments, that takes us to our upcoming meetings. And the board has a special meeting on February twenty-fifth at five o'clock at the Board of Education. Another special meeting on Monday, March second, five o'clock, Board of Education. Uh, another special meeting on Tuesday, March third, beginning at five o'clock at the Board of Education. Another special meeting on Tuesday, March tenth, beginning at four o'clock at TIP New High School. And our next regular Board of Education meeting will take place on Monday, March sixteen, at TIP New High School at six P M. So with that being said, I call for adjournment.
I motion to adjourn.
I second. So with Dahl and Dunaway, any discussion?
Dahl.
For a vote?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Patrick? Yes, Zakor.
Yes.
Hey, real quick.